I would like to ask Senator Eileen Yamashita if you can lead us in prayer.
Senator Tom Attah, can you lead us with the end of the press conference? As we proceed with the motion process and as we deliberate the priorities, as we discuss how to best support programs, support services that our government needs to help, our community and our board, and our agencies to help. Let us all be focused. Let us all be focused. Let us all be disciplined and vested in all of our actions. Our government, your Lord, will do whatever it has to do. Your Lord, to say our favor to the persons who suffer, as you fulfill those persons’ obligations, and we do not have any situation for the persons who suffer.
Senator Tom Attah, can you lead us with the end of the press conference?
Good morning. I am Mr. President. Senator Tina Munya Barnes leads us in the Guam hymn and Senator Tommy Morrison with the National Anthem.
(Singing) No, we cannot move on. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day.
Could Senator Tina Munya Barnes lead us in the Guam hymn and Senator Tommy Morrison with the National Anthem?
(Singing) No, we cannot move on. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day. We will wait until the end of the day.
Oh, take and you speak by the long, earthly light. But so proudly we hail at the twilight’s last beat. Oohs, rushlights and bright stars through the perilous sky. For the ramparts we watched were so gallant, yeesh, tree. And the rockets red glare, the bombs burst in air. Gave proof to the earth that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you. Can the clerk please take roll call? Senator Tom Attah.
President.
Senator Tony Attah.
Good afternoon, President.
Senator Uggins.
President.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
President.
Senator Duennas.
President.
Senator Lintiaco.
President.
Senator McCready.
Here.
Senator Morrison.
Here.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Hi, here.
Senator Rispisho.
President.
Senator Rodriguez.
Here.
Senator Sniklis.
President.
Speaker Wampat.
Here, go.
Senator Yamashita.
Here.
Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you. Mr. Majority Leader, do you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated July 10, 2014, as well as July 16, 2014, both subject to corrections.
In the motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that these be appended to the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And there are also messages from the Governor of Guam, Magalayan Guaha, and I also move that they be appended to the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
There are reports of standing committees, and I move for the same.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are no reports of select committees. So under Item 12, Introduction and First Reading of Bills and Resolutions, I move by one motion that Bill Number 381-32COR to Bill Number 387-32COR, Resolution Number 422-32LS, Resolution Number 423-32COR through Resolution Numbers 425-32COR, Resolution Number 426-32LS, Resolution Number 427-32COR through Resolution Numbers 430-32COR, and finally, Certificate Numbers 167-32COR through Certificate Numbers 172-32COR also, and all be given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion, I move that any bills and, sorry, any resolutions of condolence or congratulatory in nature that’s introduced for the duration of this session be adopted, that all senators be cosponsors, and the main sponsor work with the council, the Legislative Council, and the clerk and her staff in the preparation of these documents.
On that motion, objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I am in receipt of a letter that’s addressed today, that’s addressed to you from Senator Frank B. Uggins Jr., and the request is to waive the public hearing requirement for Bill Number 385-32COR. And this is, and he writes that he’s asking that the public hearing be waived, and it’s an act to appropriate funds to the Office of Veterans Affairs to fulfill matching fund requirements for three approved veteran cemetery grants, CFDA Number 64.203. And he explains that this legislation is necessary in order to realize more federal funds by providing for this 10 percent matching grant, and that he’s written to you, and that I’m also in receipt of your response, which you responded to immediately, saying that after carefully evaluating his request to waive the public hearing requirement, that you certified that Bill 385-32 meets one of the requirements set forth in 2103A of Title II, GCA, and the requirement for the public hearing is hereby waived. And so on behalf of Senator Uggins, we want to thank you for your response and your concurrence to waive the public hearing. And having made this decision, ma’am, I then moved that Bill 385-32 be placed in the second reading file.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Okay, I have no other motions at this time. And then if I can go to legislative concurrence?
Let’s, um.
Yeah, I have no other motion, so if we could go to Item 14?
Legislative concurrence, yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. From the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Moomans Affairs, on your committee, on the nomination of Denise K. Alrages to serve as a member of the Guam Public Library System Board, together with another nomination, Kyle Mandapath, to serve on the same board, as well as Maria Connolly, to serve as a member of the Guam Community College. And if I can just read along, also under your committee, on the matter of the appointment of Alvin Chiang to serve as a member of the University of Guam Border Regions, I move that they all be placed in the voting file, with the committee’s recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
From the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Hagania Restoration, Senator Barnes’s committee, on the nomination of Rob S. Tiaco to serve as a member of the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commission, and she also has the appoint, the nomination of Fay Valencia Ovalas to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. I move that these two nominees be placed in the voting file with the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Hagania Restoration’s recommendation to do confirm.
No objections, so ordered.
So Item 7, Senator Michael Sniklis’s committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, on the nomination of Tiffany C. Tam to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board.
On that motion?
Yeah.
No objections, so ordered.
With the committee’s recommendation to do confirm, as well as from the same committee, with the same recommendation to do confirm, on the appointment of Andrew S. Tidinko to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
From the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation, Senator Tom Attah’s committee, on the nomination of Marian Pizarro to serve as a general member, representative of the Guam Contractors Licensing Board, with the committee’s recommendation to do confirm, and move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
From Vice Speaker’s Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, on the nomination of Pastor Thomas L. Van Nien to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board, with the Vice Speaker’s Committee’s recommendation to do confirm, I move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And finally, from the same committee, the nomination of Athena Menno to serve on the Public Broadcasting System, PBS, with this committee’s recommendation to do confirm, I also move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you very much.
So, at the top of the agenda, I know I have 269, but I’m going to go ahead and entertain 285. Senator, you’re recognized.
Well, it’s not this. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the Majority Leader, and also the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, the sitting Chair of the Appropriations Committee, for entertaining, at least in a public forum, Bill Number 385. Madam Speaker, I’d like to move that Bill Number 385-32COR be accepted for purposes of discussion and placed in the third reading file, please.
Okay, so on the motion, let it be placed, no objections, and you would like to speak on it? You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and just for the purpose of the public and the community out there in terms of exactly what Number 385 is, it’s an act to appropriate funds to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to fulfill local matching funding requirements for three separate veterans cemetery grants. And just to highlight the various components, $150,000 would be allocated for the expansion of 300 pre-placed crypts, to improve public restrooms up to code, to add air conditioners in the administration building, to add solar power to the administration building and to the lights of the cemetery, to build a new maintenance shop with an office, an honor guard room, a staff break room, a 1,500-square-foot meeting room, and the rooms to be equipped with, obviously, the toiletries, refrigerators, lockers, microwave, showers, and the likes. Of the $260,000 that is allocated in this legislation, Madam Speaker, the remaining $80,000 is allocated specifically to prevent further erosion of the cemetery and its banks due to the Hagania River overflow into the Philippine Sea and to reinforce and stabilize the banks of the cemetery. The third component of this is a triple or tri-grant proposal, and the third grant is the allocation of $30,000 of local matching funds to clean, align, replace, tilting headstones, and redo the turf, raise sunken graves, relocate a Japanese machine gun nest, and to care for the graves of the German sailors from World War I, and to beautify the cemetery. That explains, Madam Speaker, exactly what the allocation is or would be provided for. I want to thank the Chairman again of Appropriations for having a public discussion on this matter. I did request his consideration to have a public hearing, but obviously, we’re here to discuss the fiscal year 15 budget, and that has been the nature of his focus over the course of the last couple of weeks. In light of that, he moved and proceeded forward with a roundtable discussion with officials from the Guam Veterans Affairs Office and the Department of Administration. Contained in the comments that were provided, Madam Speaker, by the Executive Director, who is Judge Umpinco, he highlighted the timing requirement for this legislation. And that’s why I did request consideration by the Chair, by yourself, Madam Speaker, to waive the hearing, but in conjunction with the nature of how the Chairman of Appropriations has proceeded in terms of the public discussion. Now, this is a grant application that, based on statements made by Judge Umpinco, has to be in the hands of the federal official. All of the previous documentation has been submitted, and the only other component is the local matching fund requirement. There are two aspects to this. One is they would need the local matching fund commitment by the local community, and then these funds would also be reimbursed upon the conclusion or during the course of the receipt of the federal grants would be reimbursed to the local community. So really, it’s fronting some funds, showing the commitment of the local government, but also getting those funds reverted back to the general fund and being replaced and reimbursed. The timing is Judge Umpinco has to transmit and send the grant application documents by tomorrow, the 13th of August, and with the anticipation that it will be in the hands of the federal officials by the 14th. That is the time constraint that we’re faced with, and that’s one of the reasons why I did ask for consideration by the body, that we allow for this grant application to proceed with the commitment, not only of this body, but of the community of Guam, that a matching 10 percent upfront requirement will be provided, with the understanding that these funds will be reimbursed. And anytime that we’re dealing with upgrading our veteran facilities, the veteran cemetery, as well as the one that is adjacent to Route 1 and Route 8, Madam Speaker, certainly it’s an investment on the part of not only the federal government, the granting agency, but also, just as importantly, the commitment on the part of the local community. So I ask yourself, Madam Speaker, and all of our colleagues, to please consider the nature of this legislation and to provide your support for it. I did inquire with Senator Tony Blas, who was their representative of the Department of Administration. Because the legislation reads that, in fact, the funds will be appropriated out of fiscal year 14 funds, are there funds available that can be utilized to be able to allocate specifically for this project? And the response during the roundtable discussion yesterday afternoon was yes. So based on that statement by Senator Tony Blas from the Department of Administration, Madam Speaker, the funds could conceivably, will conceivably be identified, readily available, and express the direct concern and commitment on the part of the people of Guam. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for your consideration again, and all of our colleagues. Thank you very much.
On the motion, Vice Speaker, you’re recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support and to explain what happened yesterday. We did conduct a roundtable discussion because I couldn’t get a public hearing in time. But all the testimony that was given was that the legislation as it’s currently written was actually written with the assistance of the federal officials at Veterans Affairs in the states, and that they would accept that once it has the signature of the governor as being the commitment on the part of the island government for this grant. And I want to also underscore that this is $2.6 million in construction funds that will be circulating among small contractors throughout this island, and to the benefit of upgrading all the veteran cemeteries, which we, as a community, really have owed to the veterans, to bury them with respect and dignity when that does occur. And also, I understand, and in the previous Veterans Affairs appropriation, that this was upfront money the same way, and that in the end, the previous chair, the late Chair, Senator Madam Pangalena, de-appropriated the money, and so this $265,000 will eventually come back to us in an appropriation. But the legislation as written was, as I understand it, approved, and if it’s not accepted, that’s Veterans Affairs problem to deal with. Because yesterday, they assured us that the way that it’s written would be satisfactory to Veterans Affairs in the states to be able to be proof of the commitment on the part of this government to come up with a 10 percent matching funds. And so I’m taking it on their word, giving them what they hope for and what they ask for, and if it’s not the way that they wanted it, they should have told us yesterday, but they didn’t. They assured that this would be signed immediately upon transmittals. So if we could vote on this today with the support of the colleagues, I think we can get it down there and signed, and it would be up to them to transmit it in time for the deadline on the 14th. So I ask for the support of the body in this and indicate my support for it. Thank you.
You’re welcome. Senator Tom Attah, you’re recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of this bill and even the action to be able to place this bill on the agenda and waiving the public hearing requirements. Oftentimes, we talk about the appreciation that we have to the veterans for all the sacrifices that they have made, and I don’t know that there’s enough that we can do to actually express that appreciation. Now, of course, you know, what this bill does basically provides local funds of $260,000 to be able to access federal funds of $2.6 million that would go towards the improvement of our cemeteries. And I think in that regard, then, is really how, although for those who have already passed on, they really don’t benefit much from it, but I think it does, something like this certainly benefits, and it’s a way for us, for the community, to express its appreciation for all the service that the veterans have provided by basically ensuring that we have a veteran cemetery, which really should be a national shrine where our men and women and their families are buried, and by ensuring that it’s the best possible facility. I remember for many, many years, the veteran cemetery was a, basically, a neglected facility to the point that many veterans said, “There’s no way I want to get buried in there.” And I think with the diligent effort of the administrator of the Veterans Affairs Office, he’s been able to actually identify and get access to, back in November of 2012, $3.2 million. He has then now also identified an additional $2.6 million. So there’s been more money pumped into the veteran cemetery facilities over these past two years than there have been in the past many, many decades. I just want to point out, though, back in November of 2012, there was a bill that I had actually introduced, and I’m not sure why it was so critical then, and I would need to take time to take a look at the committee report and the bill, but a bill was actually introduced and it was enacted into law. And initially, the public law that was passed, Public Law 31, I believe it was 233, or I believe it was 233, one of the provisions there was that there was a Guam Veteran Cemetery Expansion Matching Grant. And that particular law was, that bill was actually introduced and specifically struck out the word “matching.” And I’m not quite sure what the rationale was for that, but it was, the bill was to amend the law which initially identified these funds as a matching fund, and basically simply said that it was a grant, a grant for this veteran cemetery expansion. And the way that works is that then, the way this whole thing works is, it’s not that, you know, you put up, for every dollar you put up, you get $10 of federal funds. It’s basically, the federal government, the cemetery administration is basically saying, “We have $2.6 million, but we want to see some demonstration of commitment to the project.” And so that commitment can be then demonstrated by the local government, actually then expending its local funds for the engineering and design of the work that is to be done, and then, basically, you know, once that is demonstrated, then the federal government will make available its, the $2.6 million that’s available. So I would, I guess, I would just ask that the legal counsel, and I too will take the time to look through this committee report, and it’s got to be done today, because I think probably the one thing that hasn’t been mentioned is the fact that, you know, it’s great that we were able to get it put on the agenda today and we’re discussing it, but I think the legislature is going to have to take action sooner than wait till the end of the week, because the Veterans Administration basically needs to finalize its paperwork and get it sent off to the Veterans Administration. So I just want to also point that out, that voting on this particular bill post-haste is going to be very important. Thank you very much.
You’re welcome, Senator, and that’s noted, and as soon as legal counsel is in, we’ll bring that to your attention. Senator Munya Barnes, you’re recognized.
(Inaudible) Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, maybe just a point of inquiry in reference to this, if I may?
Okay.
And maybe I didn’t hear it earlier, but the good author was talking about the sum that was needed, the 10 percent local matching funding requirement for the veterans programs as delineated here was $260,000, and that would suffice the 10 percent that we would need to give for the funds that are coming in. I understand that there was, that the author said that there was a reimbursement, and if that reimbursement came in, maybe if not him, the OFP Chair could answer this for me, would that be coming back to the Veterans Affairs? Would it go into the general fund? Would it go to a separate fund to be utilized for veterans? Just wanting to make that clarification. I do support the intent of the bill, and I understand its urgency, but I just want to make sure I know where that reimbursement is going to.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks to the Chair of Appropriations for allowing me to comment on this. The history is that the legislation was passed previously, and all of these funds will be repaid back to the local community. And what the Speaker Pangalena, at that time as the Chair, had done is, after receipt of the of the repayment back to the local community of the 10%, he went in, he introduced legislation, he deappropriated the appropriated amount, and then he appropriated it elsewhere. So, until the funds were received, actually in the general fund coffers, it would revert back to the general fund in response to one of the inquiries. So, it would come back to the general fund, subject to reappropriation by the Appropriations Committee, and not be directed in any other direction other than this purpose.
Senator, was he able to answer your question?
Yep. Yes, Madam Speaker, but I just wanted to make sure, would these funds be needed for the Department of Veterans Affairs once the reimbursement is made? And maybe I could ask legal counsel if there could be an amendment made, but I'll go ahead and confer with the Chairman of Veterans Affairs and seeing what we could do to making sure what's best used for the reimbursement coming in.
I see the Chairman, of course, I'm sure he wants to respond. Vice Speaker?
As was done by the previous chair, it can be deappropriated and then reappropriated back to Veterans Affairs for their operations. Right now, it's specific to matching this, so we would have to deappropriate it. And if they need more money, we can deal with it then. But first, let's get this through, let's get the grant going and the construction completed, and then we'll deal with that when we get to that bridge.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That suffices.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the motion? There being none, but because of an inquiry from Senator Tom Adda, we're going to take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator Tom Adda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would move to make the following amendment on Page 1, Line 5, to delete the words "V 10%," and then on Line 6, the word "matching," so that then, that would read then, "General Fund to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to fulfill local funding requirements for three separate veteran cemetery grants."
On the amendment, no objections, so order.
And then, along with that, then, of course, it would be the technical amendment on the title by deleting on the third line there, the word "matching," so that...
On the amendment?
To fulfill local funding requirements.
Okay. On the amendment, no objections, so order. Thank you very much, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? So, on the motion then, to send 385 to the third reading file, Senator, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank you and the Chair of Appropriations and all of our colleagues for entertaining this measure despite going through the existing process and deliberation. I want to also, Madam Speaker, move for the addition of Senator Tom Adda, Senator Tony Adda, and Senator Respecho as co-sponsors of the legislation.
On the motion, without any objections, Senator Tom Adda, Senator Tony Adda, and Senator Respecho. No objections, so order. Okay, so, Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that notwithstanding the House rules, we suspend discussion on items in the second reading file, that we proceed to the voting file, and that we vote on Bill 385-32. As amended on the floor, we vote on this bill without engrossment, and we proceed to vote on Items 9, 10, and 11 under legislative concurrences that we moved.
On that motion, without any objections, so order. Would the clerk please read the title of Bill 385?
Bill Number 385-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Frank Beugan Jr., Senator Tom Adda, Senator Tony Adda, Senator Respecho. An Act to Appropriate Funds to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to Fulfill Local Funding Requirements for Three Separate Veteran Cemetery Grants.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda?
Aye.
Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda?
Yes.
Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan?
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez?
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Luntiaco?
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye.
Aye.
Senator McCready?
Yes.
Senator McCready?
Aye.
Senator Morrison?
Aye.
Senator Morrison?
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Respecho?
Aye.
Senator Respecho?
Aye.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
Senator Rodriguez?
Aye.
Senator Siniklis?
Yes.
Senator Siniklis?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill number 385-32 COR received 14 yea votes. Bill number 385-32 is duly passed by this body. On the appointment of or nomination of Ms. Marian Pizarro to serve as the General Manager, Representative of the Contractors License Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Marian Pizarro received 14 yea votes, she's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr., oh Pastor Thomas L. Van Engen to serve as a member of the Guam parole board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Pastor Thomas Van Engen received 14 yea votes and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Athena Meno to serve as a member of PBS, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Athena Meno received 14 votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. Thank you. Senators, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we recess till 1:00 p.m. tomorrow.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.